Everybody, welcome to the last school committee meeting of the year. School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. This is a regular meeting, today is December 18th, 2017. We have an exciting agenda tonight, several very special presentations which we're excited about. Let me just read through the agenda. We'll begin with any visitors who'd like to be heard, we then have some minutes to take up. We have a teaching and learning highlight featuring the 2017-2020 strategic plan logo with Ms. Akarcha and one of our senior students, Nick Esposito. We then have a special presentation by the 2017 Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They're going to present their outstanding school partner award of the year, which we are excited to have land right here in Foxborough.
Oh lordy, excuse me.
That's alright.
Going out in style. I have never done that in ten years.
You're baptizing your retirement.
We have an addition to our FHS student activities, which Ms. Myers-Packler will present. Mr. Yuckna is then going to take us through a preliminary discussion of the proposed FY19 school year budget. There was a budget subcommittee meeting last week, we're going to go through it in full committee tonight. We have a couple of donations to accept, a pearl drum set to the music department and the Foxborough Kickers Club. We're going to take other matters next, which we normally do last. We're going to take that up second to last because we have a mid-year retiree that we want to recognize tonight, as long as she doesn't spill her water again.
You might not want to be recognized me by that.
But I asked Janet to put that on last because that might take a couple of minutes. And just before we begin, I want to take a moment of silence, which we do occasionally when we lose some special people to the town and the schools. And there's a brother and a sister that I want to remember tonight, who both have passed since our last meeting. I didn't know Ray McKay when he was a teacher here. I got to know Ray when he was running the Sunlight Farm and selling Christmas trees and putting up a tremendous pumpkin display. We now have a large tree at the South Street, South Community Center, South Foxborough Community Center that's there, I think probably in perpetuity in his honor at this point. It was very sad to lose Ray, but then we lost his sister Marge too. A lot of people know Jack and Marge Othelat here in town. A lot of us, I think, are probably feeling for Jack right now. Marge was just one of those people that you were blessed and better to have known her. We were barely a week moved into this town when she got to know my kids in a summer program and never once stopped asking about them despite all of her children, her grandchildren, her extended family. So we can just take a moment of silence please for Ray McKay and Marge Othelat, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything that I missed?
I did know Ray McKay, when, my early years of teaching, he was still at the middle school, as was his wife, also a middle school teacher. And their daughter Cindy was a guidance counselor at the Ahern for quite a bit. So, great guy, just good, just like what you knew him as, all-around good man who genuinely cared about children. So, sad week in Foxborough, and combine that with Mrs. Othelat and it's quite stunning.
I think you both said it very well, both people who epitomize everything that is good about this town and will be remembered for all the good things that they did throughout their life as citizens of Foxborough and as friends to Foxborough Public Schools. They both were huge supporters of our schools and our students throughout their lives here in Foxborough.
I'm glad you made that point at the end there Tina, because you're right. I can remember Jack and Marge coming to just about every possible event they possibly could. And that on top of all of Ray's involvement, so.
It was my pleasure to escort them both to Bandorama last March, so I was their chauffeur. So I was very happy to be able to attend that with both Jack and Marge. They loved our schools and our music and I had the pleasure of working with Mr. McKay on the, as a PTO parent, I was in charge of the Mother's Day plant sale at the Taylor School for many years and Mr. McKay provided the pansies for our plant sale. So I had the pleasure of interacting with him to get the flowers and he was always wonderful about that. So they were, they're two individuals who will really be missed by a lot of people in this town.
On a positive note, you know, boy, talk about living a good life and leaving an impact and impression on your community and being part of the Foxborough fabric. They both succeeded at that and many other things, I think.
All three of them were Foxborough High School graduates, as we all know, and Jack and Marge were high school sweethearts. So, he's going to have a big void after all that courtship and 65 years of marriage.
Well, we'll all make it our collective goal to help him fill that void. But I am happy to have known them and fortunate to have known them. Okay, thank you for that. Any visitors who want to be heard tonight? I know we have a lot of visitors, but they may want to wait until they have their opportunity, which is fine. Seeing none, we're going to move right on to our minutes. We've got one set of minutes tonight, November 20th, regular meeting minutes.
I did have one change on page four, and I'm sorry I didn't catch it earlier Janet, but I think I may have misspoken at the meeting, but in the paragraph that begins, Ms. Bellinger noted that due to a conflict, it says with the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, it should say special town meeting on December 4th. We met jointly with the Board of Selectmen on November 27th and then, but I may have misspoken at the meeting, but I think our minutes should reflect that the special town meeting was the conflict with our school committee meeting.
Great.
That's all I have.
I recommend that we accept our minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, all those in favor? Four, nothing, four zero, approved. I should mention, Mrs. Weiss is not available with us tonight, so that's why there are four of us. Okay, teaching and learning highlight, Ms. Spinelli.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Berdus and invite Nick Esposito and Ms. Akasha to come up to the guest table.
You can see what it's going to be about. So I'm super excited to introduce Nick and his work. So to give you a little bit of background, so our strategic plan, which is new this year, we really looked at what is it that we want for our students as they leave Foxborough High School? And talked a lot about what those qualities and characteristics look like in order to really help them exceed college career and in life. And through the strategic planning process, it came down to looking at Ed Leaders 21, which is a network organization, and they have this campaign for profile of a graduate and they have a toolkit that you can go through and really have conversations about what is it that will prepare our students for the future? And we identified different characteristics in Foxborough that we really felt were important as far as having our students be successful, as far as college career and the future in their life. And we wanted the students' perspective and to see what that might look like in a logo to have within our strategic plan. And Nick is one of our fabulous seniors here at Foxborough High School and a member of Senior Inc. as well. And so in collaborating with Nick and talking about all of the qualities of what that graduate would look like, he then put his artistic talents to work. And this is the logo that he has created for us, for our strategic plan. So I'm going to turn it over to Nick and have him talk to you a little bit about the design process and how he came up with this logo.
So I've been working with Ms. Akasha, taking graphic design classes for all four years I've been at Foxborough High School. And when, last year I was in Senior Inc. and this year I'm in AP. We'd have like a client come and have, give us an assignment and we try and work and collaborate to bring that to reality and then, so it was just kind of another one of those, you came to Ms. Akasha, she let me know of it. And then we were able to work back and forth through like the email, kind of figure something out, so pretty happy with how it came out.
So Nick, you want to talk a little bit about the design, so if you, and then kind of note around the perimeter there of those characteristics?
So originally it was a smaller list of characteristics, so I tried to base just the logo around that and at that point it didn't have the text around the outside. But then I received another email from Dr. Berdus and she said all those things could be incorporated, so I thought why not just rain it around the outside and it came out nice.
I didn't know how that they would be incorporated. He's the mastermind behind that.
You know what I, what struck me is, and it's not, what you see is obviously the head with the gears, like thinking, your mind is thinking, the graduate, the criteria, but what really struck me was how you use those gold bands to show the world. So here we're talking about global education and global readiness and you got that in so subtly, but it ends up being so prominent. I thought it was brilliant.
And just to, as to kind of bring us back to what our vision is within the strategic plan, so speaking to that, the Foxborough Public Schools will inspire our students to succeed in and contribute to an ever-changing global society by fostering dynamic and integrated learning experiences. And all of those characteristics are ones that came up through our work here in the district as well as the strategic planning committee. So when we look at social and cross-cultural skills, getting to what that would look like in a global society, the collaboration piece.
Yeah, like so global citizenship was one of the earlier words, so I decided to incorporate that into the design and that's kind of what I came up with.
Fits for citizenship too.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Beautiful. And he had a number of renditions too, you had different color schemes going in the beginning as well and then you settled on this one.
Yeah.
Beautiful. So our whole strategic plan was done in the spring and we were just waiting for your logo. So it just represents everything that's in it so well and.
Thank you.
What are you doing next year?
I'm not sure yet, I'm still waiting on answers from some schools, but.
Graphic design?
Maybe, yeah, see where it takes me.
You sure did a good job with this, Nick.
Thank you.
That's really impressive.
Beautiful.
Nick, what are some of the other things you enjoy working on?
Well, this year I played soccer and that was a great time and taking classes with Ms. Akasha in graphic design, that's a big passion of mine, but all the stuff of the regular teenager, I guess.
Were you a graphic design interested guy before high school?
Yeah, so when I saw the opportunity to take graphic design courses here, I was really excited to learn more about the subject.
And you were able to take them all four years?
Yes, yep.
So Nick is our one AP 2D student this year who's doing it in design. He's our one student doing AP 2D design. And he's also our one senior who's entered his design portfolio into Scholastics, which is a big deal. Sounds great.
When would you hear about that?
End of January, end of January we'll hear about that. And then if you check out the Senior Inc. site, Nick is the one that designed our website for Senior Inc., if that's not wrong.
Oh, we'll have to check that out.
So he's, he's pretty humble, but I also am stealing him for the Foxborough Street Painting Festival for senior project because of his professionalism. And Nick's the kind of person that I can, I went to a tech conference and I got really excited about augmented reality and creating apps and so I contacted Nick and Nick was like, alright, let's go, when are we starting? So he's, he's all about trying something new and keep going.
Impressive.
Nick, one last question for me. So you're a senior here at Foxborough High. We're always looking for ways we can do things differently, better, more effective. As you reflect on winding down your high school career, and I didn't, for the audience, I didn't prep them with this, so this is putting them on the spot, but talk a little bit about your high school career and what you've enjoyed and things we could do better and.
I really liked it here, I mean, I thought all my teachers were great, Ms. Akasha especially. I thought it was, there was always opportunities to take new classes on what I wanted, like last year I took a film class, something else I'm interested in, that was a great class, had a lot of fun, so I think it's been a great four years here, definitely.
Is there any classes that we don't offer that you would have liked to have?
I don't think so, to be honest. There's a lot of opportunities, grateful for it.
It's great to hear.
And to his credit, he did walk onto the soccer team this year and got varsity playing time, so it's nice to have all those options available.
You're a first-time soccer player?
Yeah.
And you're on the varsity in that?
Impressive.
You're not too talented, are you?
Thank you.
Anything else for Nick or Kelly?
It's a great job.
Nick, thanks for coming, that is great. Do we have rights yet from Nick to use this in other places or do we need to sign?
He told me he was going to sign off on it.
Great job Nick, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for coming.
Kelly, thank you so much. That Senior Inc. course, it's wonderful to be a client of theirs, let me just tell you.
Nick, we always tell the students who come, you're not required to stay.
No. In fact, you probably, you know, might not want to.
Other senior things to do.
That's a really good job.
That is great. We always like these teaching and learning highlights because they show off some of the things that our students accomplish and that our staff accomplishes with our students. And I'm going to use that as a segue, speaking of showing off things that the schools accomplish, we have a nice presentation. Are we waiting for Glenn?
No, he's been here. He was here before we were.
Glenn, you're hiding back there.
Mr. Glenn Kucha.
Hi Glenn. Glenn, do you want to come on up to the table of visitors and I'll turn it over to Ms. Spinelli?
So Glenn Kucha is the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, your professional organization. And I will, I'll give you a little bit of background, Glenn, you want me to, you want me to do the background first, right? A little bit, okay, great. So their organization, the professional organization for the school committees in Massachusetts, offers an opportunity for school districts to nominate, nominate groups or people for the outstanding school partner award. So we've talked on and off over the years about how much cable access does and I'm so glad so many of you are here. So this year, the school committee and I nominated Foxborough Cable Access to receive the 2017 Outstanding School Partner Award from the Mass Association of School Committees. And we did it for a number of reasons, I'll try to keep this short so we can just hear from you, but there was a written nomination and, you know, we did it as a token of appreciation for everything that you do at Foxborough Cable Access. But our nomination, we felt doesn't really go far enough and we could be here forever to say all the things you do in the community, it doesn't go far enough to describe all that you do in that spirit of above and beyond that you have for our students, for our schools, for our town. But within the nomination, which I hope you've all had a chance to read, I know you, I sent Mike the letter, is that, you know, for over 30 years you've produced local television programs for our community. And as such, you've become such an integral part of what's Foxborough. And it's almost like you've created your own problems, now everybody expects they're going to see whatever they want to see on FCA, on cable access. You have a constant presence at all of our school events and you broadcast so many student activities every single week, sporting events, concerts, art installations, theater productions. You're up at the Street Painting Festival that Kelly mentioned when I was there last spring, you're there. So even if it's not an easy place to set up and film, you do. Up in the great outdoors, up there at Gillette, National Honor Society, other induction ceremonies, just about anything, wherever kids are, you will truly go anywhere. And I think that really helps the positive public relations in the community, but it also generates significant support for what the school committee and the administration are trying to do with our schools, because it helps people see what school is like nowadays and it might be different from what it was when people, you know, were growing, were growing up. And, you know, I really feel like we wrote, you're the heart and soul of the Foxborough community. You're an invaluable asset to the schools and the community at large and under the leadership of Executive Director Mike Weber, you're going to come up in a minute, FCA constantly recognizes and honors individuals and organizations that make a difference in our community. It's about time somebody recognized you and your contributions and your deep devotion to public service. So we would love for Mike Weber and the other volunteers to come up close to the guest table, as we call it right here. And then we'll let Glenn do his thing.
My thing is very brief. We began a community awards program to thank those people whose contributions to the public schools were significant, sustained, and of value to the community. This is not a one-time good deed award. And this year, upon the nomination of the Foxborough School Committee, we're happy to recognize Foxborough Cable Access. I do want to say, just as a personal word, I was a volunteer in the Cambridge Community Television Program for 15 years, I could never get the soundboard right. My most memorable experience was being asked to give up a Sunday to do a three-hour community presentation, only to find out that it was my Haitian friend speaking in French, a language I do not speak. And there I was, not knowing what was going on, taking orders from the control room from somebody who was speaking a language I could not speak. Interesting experience, but I do appreciate, and we do appreciate, the wonderful work done by community cable access people around the state and clearly in Foxborough, bringing the school department and other community elements to the community is very important. My role actually is to present the award to the Chair and the Superintendent because this award is being presented in both the names of the Foxborough School Committee and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, as are 2017 School Partner, Outstanding School Partner in Massachusetts.
We're going to come over to you. Oh no, we're covering you right now.
Poor Mike back in the back working, Mike Everson. No, Mike Everson.
He can sneak out for a minute.
Come on out, Mike.
Come on, Mike.
So I'm going to hand this to the Superintendent because I want to thank Foxborough Cable, which I'll do in a minute, but first I want to tell you that these awards don't happen without the Superintendent going out of her way and first coming up with the idea and secondly, doing all the hard work on behalf of the committee to recognize local community groups. And not, too many years ago, we recognized the Foxborough Y for all that they've done and now she came up with someone else who really deserved similar thanks. So I'm going to hand this to her to make the presentation.
Okay, but you've got to stand next to me. All right, on behalf of the Foxborough School Administration and especially the Foxborough School Committee, we are so honored to present you and all the volunteers behind you from Foxborough Cable Access with this very well-deserved recognition.
Thank you.
So.
Don't pay any attention to that man behind the curtain.
Get on either side of him.
We're going to get the volunteers to crowd around.
And that is a former Foxborough High School graduate now snapping your photo.
Always on the.
And Michael also is a former Foxborough High School graduate.
Okay, good. Okay.
So I just want to, I just want to say a couple more things because anybody who knows me knows I like a microphone, which is why I like Foxborough. The first is I want to talk about the leadership of Foxborough Cable. It takes special people, as we all know, to do something like this and Mike Weber just does a phenomenal tireless job. And we are so fortunate to have you in our community and your tireless effort and all that you do and all the different events that you cover. And we never have to ask you twice. In fact, I think half the times we don't ask you, the community asks you and you just do it. So Mike, without you and your leadership, none of this happens and I want to give you a round of applause. Two more. We have had one or two folks work in our Foxborough Cable Access Room behind the screen over here, behind the wall, but the guy who's been doing it most recently and seems to be at every event and when this Michael can't be there, that Michael is, but I want to thank Mike Everson personally, who's been covering an awful lot of these meetings and having to listen to us a lot, so thank you Mike. And lastly, as everyone knows, this doesn't happen without the volunteers. So all of you who've put in, gosh, I go face by face, all the hours, right Paul? All the hours and hours and hours. It's phenomenal. So it's a tribute to you, it's a tribute to the community. Thank you, everybody who's volunteered and done this work on our behalf, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you Glenn for taking all your time, personal time to come and be here tonight to present, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Awesome. Oh good. Thank you Glenn.
Oh nice. Thank you.
Good timing.
Under 50 bucks, right?
Wow, beautiful, we should all wear them.
These are beautiful.
Thank you.
Wow, thanks Mike.
Yeah, she had a swim meet tonight, so she wasn't able to be here.
Love it.
Before we move on, I just would like to note one thing, that our Chair is too humble to say that he wears two hats in this, that he is also a dedicated FCA volunteer and indeed is up on the scaffolding taping football games, particularly in very rough weather during homecoming this year, so I just want to thank you two for doing that.
They're a great group to work with.
Really lucky, really lucky.
Above and beyond.
Absolutely.
Stuck to my other one, sorry, I knew it was somewhere. I'm like, how could I have read it if I, if I still can't find it right now? Thank you so much, all the FCA people, wonderful job.
I thought about having them parade around for the handshakes like we do with the retirees, but I think it was better the way you did it.
Worked out great.
They get to all be on at the same time.
And nice of you to thank Glenn for coming.
Very nice of Glenn to come.
It's not a short ride to come for a 10-minute presentation, but it goes to show some of the pull that Mrs. Spinelli has with some of the local groups that Glenn would support the write-up, the nomination and also come and present it, so.
Right.
Kudos to Debbie.
Good people, execute. Good people.
Ms. Myers-Packler, are you ready?
We're in a, sure. She has a hard and fast 10 minutes from now exit to pick up one of her own actual children, not one of our Foxborough children. But we're here to talk about, in addition to the student activity account, we.org, Diana, do you have your, you can get it from Janet.
Oh, thank you.
Janet has the memo, Janet can go to you.
Yeah, you can take mine, here.
Yep. So as it is now, and under the law that's been strengthened a little bit to govern student activity accounts, any new student activity account, if they're going to be fundraising and there's a new club that's raising money, it is at the approval of school committee, it's part of the oversight of student activity accounts, so that, and this has been a lot in the news lately about other people's student activity accounts, thankfully not ours, ours are run pretty tightly. Bill has been instrumental in, you know, really understanding the new law about two years ago and making sure that we fully comply. So that's why she's here, you may have heard in the past, other activities get added, but now if it's going to result in a student activity account, the school committee has to accept responsibility for the new, be knowledgeable about the student activity that's new and the account that's involved. So that's why Diana's here and why you're hearing it as an individual activity.
So you have the summary. This has been spearheaded by Irene Tipmus in our World Language Department and part of this really came out of and has grown out of the Spanish AP program. And the College Board, along with Advanced Placement, is looking for different subjects within AP to become more global, global in their look and global in their scope and global in what they're doing. And part of that too, is also what can they do as volunteers and as giving back. And so this particular organization, the we organization, is actually from the College Board and from the AP folks. So Irene had applied for, actually to be a part of a new program that the AP and the College Board are doing. And part of that was that her students would actually be participating in a community event or, and by community, it doesn't just mean at the local level, it can be at the global level as well. And so this was what they decided to partner with. So, so far, they have been raising money through the sale of chocolate and that chocolate is actually from cocoa beans that are all free-grown and with the majority of the profits going back to those farmers who are actually growing and a little bit more on that global level. They're now currently also collecting for clothes for local folks, for distribution as needed by those who do need it. So again, because there is a money-making part to this, not for them to make, but because they are going to be earning money then to be able to give back, it's for that purpose that it does need to go into or have your approval. We're not sure how long this will be sustained, it will be at least through this year, but there's also more than likely the connection to, to the World Language Honor Societies, in particular the Spanish Honor Society too. So it's kind of all-encompassing as it begins to kind of branch out.
So the goal of the club is to build a well in a village in Africa?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's where the money will be going?
Yes.
Okay.
So they've got the cocoa beans that they're buying and then raising the profits from that to be able to be utilized.
Are they going to take donations from the community?
They haven't raised or asked for, but I'm sure that if anybody wished to do that, we'd just have to have that go through the school committee for approval, I would imagine, as a gift toward that particular, toward this particular organization.
To a student activity, I'm looking at Bill.
No, okay. Yes, no, no, can't happen then.
No, no, you can get it. You don't have to have.
You don't have to have it accepted by us.
Oh, we don't have to. It's a separate...
Student activity is not a town account or under your control. It's only under your control as far as setting it up and making sure that, obviously, we want to...
Financially, the financial oversight is done.
Okay, so scratch that. On that piece. Okay.
So Diana, thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
Just your thoughts in general?
I think it's wonderful. Anything that I think our students want to take off with, you know, has always been really, I've always wanted to say yes to it and see how far it takes them. And for any experiences, both here in the States as well as abroad, I think are wonderful. Just as an aside note, we've got another group potentially that would be coming forward that's also looking at building wells on some of the reservation lands here in the United States. So it's not always that extended piece. Sometimes it can be right here at home in our own backyards as well, so that may be coming your way as well. They may be in connection with another organization that's already established, but I think that it just, what the students get out of it is what they put into it, and I think it's that satisfaction, that understanding, that gaining world knowledge as well, as far as what they can do to really make a difference. And it's impactful, very impactful for our students.
I was privileged to be in the auditorium during that presentation, and it was very well done. Very well done. And so needed. I mean, desperately needed.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Diana?
I'm just curious how many kids are involved or currently?
I'm not quite sure of what her total numbers are, and I could certainly ask her. I would say she's well beyond the twenty mark of students who are involved, because again, it started at the class and then from there it expands out.
I know from personal experience, it actually has been pretty successful. I know a number of people that have been involved with it. It's definitely something that a lot of people would like to get involved with.
That's great. Thank you, Matthew.
Sale of bars, actually, at the parents' night, the chocolate bars, of which I had the very dark chocolate, which is more on the cooking chocolate that some people do seem to like to eat, but that's all that was left, but it was good. I didn't mind it. I liked that dark chocolate, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Foxborough High School new student activity, we.org.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Diana, thank you, and please thank Irene for...
I most certainly will. I most certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, go home.
Yeah. She's gotta pick up.
Pick up first.
And it's far from here, so scoot.
As we know, Diana spends many hours here.
Uh-huh, she certainly does.
Moving at light speed so far, Mr. Yukna and Ms. Spinelli, preliminary discussion of proposed FY19 budget.
I'll just start by saying, I am thrilled that this is the last time I'll be presenting the preliminary budget for Foxborough, and I, we welcome some members of our advisory committee, our liaisons to the AdCom are here tonight, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And we'll start off, Bill will lead off, and we'll go from there.
So, basically, we have our standard timeline of the process with the budget itself. As you know, we met with, or at least the school administration met with the town administration back in November, kinda to go over what the status of the town's revenues were and, you know, what goals they had on their side as well as what we had on our side this year. On 11/27, the joint meeting with the school committee and the board of selectmen to, again, have an overview of the same things that we had seen, but with a little bit more information probably provided at that point. This is the first of three meetings relative to the budget itself. The subcommittee met last week on 12/12, again, to review it as well, to see some things. At that point, we were still making some minor changes, but for the most part, everything is consistent with what they saw, and we did go through, you know, the point-by-point the issues within the budget, which, there's a lot of information here tonight, but we'll give you a basis of it and not do the same thing we did to them at that point, and we're gonna answer more questions in the next two meetings, once you've had a chance to fully read through it. Obviously, as I said, you know, we have also a meeting tomorrow night with the advisory committee's liaisons to go through with some of their questions, obviously early on in the process, but the more familiar they are with our budget, the better off we are once we go to the AdCom itself. Last couple of years, it's worked out very well for us by having them very active at the beginning. The finance director obviously also has to put out a large book with all of our budget stuff, so he'll be doing that tomorrow, and he'll have obviously the same information what you have right now. The finance director, once he does do that, then we obviously get into the full AdCom presentations, and as I said, you have two more meetings and could have a third if you needed. You have the eighth and the 22nd of January right now. You have a, by law, that basically you have to before the end of the month, so you could do the 29th if for some reason there was a need to do that, so I think you have plenty of time to make any recommendations or deal with the issues that you see fit. And then slightly after that, I actually had earlier this year than last year by a couple of days on January 31st, advisory committee will also see the, or have a presentation in front of their full board, in which, you know, the whole board can ask questions to us, and then obviously a number of steps. Their final approvals are in March, but then we go to town meeting on May 14th with hopefully approval for the budget itself.
So, our budget message, the first paragraph doesn't change that much year to year because we, our goal is always to maintain the same level of educational services, you know, the high level of educational services that we have historically given to our students and families, but, you know, the things that are different each year from year to year is that we are constantly adjusting to the shifting student population, and you'll see us talk about that a little bit later. We're still continuing to do that in smaller and smaller bites, but, you know, it still is necessary for us to shift around with the population. And as always, we're working within the municipal budget philosophy and their funding framework, and the one thing that's different in this budget is we are now making sure that we're aligned with the new strategic plan that you just heard mentioned by Amy. And so our four objectives are, you can read them there, but they're really about developing responsible global citizens, and with all of that that comes with it, we're much more serious about the global citizenship and being globally ready than we have been in the past. We want to strengthen school culture, so that's about all of our stakeholders having a voice in the culture and climate, both within the schools and extending into the community and the families as well. We want to enhance district infrastructure and technological capabilities to provide an increasingly safe and supportive physical and innovative academic school environment. And the fourth objective does not change, is the one that doesn't not change from plan to plan typically, and it's to maintain strong public support for public education within the town of Foxborough, which is, as you know, critical to everything that we want to do for our students. So the only thing different in the bottom part of the paragraph is that we, you know, as always, we want to maintain reasonable class sizes, we want to preserve our current programs and services, including the free universal full-day kindergarten that was just started this year as a non-paying entity, if you will, and we do want to move our initiatives forward, but what's happening with us lately is that we have new and increasing needs. We always have increasing needs in special ed, but we actually have some new kinds of needs in special ed that we're seeing crop up now, and we certainly have a new need for English language learners and their support. So Amy will talk about that later in detail if you would like more detail, but we've gone from ten students in 2011, I think it was, to, as of today, it's 61. So, and we were 59 the last time we mentioned this to you, so we're already over that. So we definitely need more services to students who come here whose first language is in English and who need support in English language development, which is reading, writing, speaking, and listening in English. And as you just heard, we have a growing interest of students in our extracurricular clubs and activities, and while we offer probably more than other high schools our size, because we're all like-minded and we want to provide kids with opportunities that are psyched them and they're passionate about, I don't think we've hit the limit yet. So our kids will show us when, where the limit is, but I don't think we're close to that yet. And that, other than that, it's, you know, enables us to support everything across all aspects of public education that you would expect.
So the budget process itself, again, the town has always had the concept of bottom-up budgeting, so about eighty-three percent of our total budget is salaries. We obviously start with that. We take all the existing employees today. We move them by their steps, lanes. We take the negotiated increase that we know of, and in this case, we have seven out of the nine that are, the contracts are settled on, the two that aren't, are custodians and maintenance for next year, but we...
They're settled now, but they're up.
They're up for next year. Right. So what we need, you know, so we'll take the entire, every employee, and we'll go through the entire budget process with them first. As I said, as that represents eighty-three percent, it's obviously the biggest thing for us to deal with. We have to assume that, based on a process that's been in place for years, that we'll need to make up one hundred and twenty-five thousand from retirements, resignations, or any kind of departure of a current employee with new employees coming on. Typically, we use the teachers as our mainstay, obviously, because they're the largest salary-based group, so it takes about five teachers to make up for this amount. Obviously, if we have turnover in other departments, it's a larger number that you have to have to get there, or a combination thereof, of, you know, all the departments to get to this number. The, one of the big issues you're gonna see we're facing is around the grant side of things, but we use all of our grant money and all of our revolving account money to basically settle this budget. So the budget includes all expenses, less those two items, to get down to what we're asking the town for. Again, we kinda, we know some towns basically would keep all of the grant expenses outside of their budget request, but that, we feel it does look more transparent and everybody getting to see the full budget and, and see where we're getting the extra money from when we break them, the breakdown on outside resources. And then as Deb just said, we had a four-year phase-in of free kindergarten, but the way the plan originally was developed was, we had, similar to what we do with all revolving accounts, we tried to get about a one-year full balance in the account. Well, when we made the decision to move forward with this, we had about $300,000 sitting in that account. In the first year, we reduced down, when the town gave us the ninety-five thousand more to our budget, we reduced down the tuition, and so we were asking less for the parents in that first year. We were still asking for tuition-based. In the, what's now the, what was the second year, we basically have gone to a free basis. We had 200,000 left in the account. We could pull that down, and that basically will allow us to get through the fourth year. If everything is funded appropriately, we will be fully funded through the town side and eliminating all tuition-based fees effectively for our K-12 program. And again, so it was a four-year where we required basically a $95,000 increase per year in the budget in order to make that happen, and we used the revolver to help it soften.
And just to reiterate the we discussed today, because I temporarily forgot, if the 125,000 in retirements that Amy's gonna have to make up to some, it doesn't include the shift from Amy to me or her successor to her, because those are already known salaries that Bill's accounted for. So people might think, oh, we've already gotten a head start. No, because it's been accurately adjusted already. So that's, that's not going to help when it comes to making up the 125,000.
All right. Total budget for next year, as we're projecting at this point, is $34,991,125. It's an increase of 901,000 and a percentage increase of 2.64 percent.
Okay, what's new in the school budget? On the next slide, there's a little bit more, I'm gonna talk specifically about the position shifts that you see noted in the first paragraph, but as you know, after the, after every budget is prepared, presented, and voted upon, there are shifts that happen. So for example, this cycle is presented tonight, it'll be discussed two more times in January, you will vote on it, but between the end of January and when school opens, things happen. I mean, we have thousands of students and we have a lot of needs shifting in and out, so it's never that you can exactly identify in December exactly how many people you're gonna need to open school eight months later. So there have been some shifts, mostly in the area of special education changes and staff caseloads. I'll talk about those shifts a little bit more on the next page. We have sometimes had students move in after we've started the school year, or certainly after the budget has been prepared, either or or both usually, and that's what's explained in the second bullet, that that is a federal law, so if we have a student move in, actually, we're expecting another student very soon who's moving in, and the IP calls for a one-on-one assistant, and that is by law, you must provide that. So that's gonna happen again in perpetuity, and it does every year. Okay, so the third bullet, the ELL teacher, we've added a .5 in the upcoming budget based on the caseload, and this is where it explains, as of today, we have 61, and we only have 1.5 teachers, one and a half teachers across all five schools servicing those group of students. Amy runs that program, and I think, I think it should be easy to tell you that we don't meet the service requirements the Department of Ed has for English language learners unless we add somebody. Obvious. Okay, on the fourth bullet, you will see in this budget that we're reducing a piece of two elementary specialists. So if you remember from last year and the year before, every, but we're reducing by about one, maybe two elementary classrooms, depending on enrollment. So for example, IGO seems pretty stable at four classrooms, or four sections, we call them, per grade level, and they move up pretty steadily. That part of town, the population still is pretty robust, and we seem to get about the same number of students. At Burl and Taylor, it's been fluctuating a little bit, so we may have two classrooms at a grade level, or two sections, we may have three the next year. So we've got twos and threes going up and down throughout the borough and moving through it, and that's just the way it is in those neighborhoods. So as you know, for the last couple of years, we've started to reduce those classrooms accordingly. With that comes the specialists who support them in wellness and music and art and Spanish. So as we've had, if we reduce one classroom across three schools, it's not gonna result in much of a net gain on the staff side, but now that we've had one or two each year for about three years, now that there is, there aren't enough classrooms for those specialists to serve. So now we're at the point where we have to reduce them by a little bit. So this year, we reduced wellness teachers by .2 at the elementary level based on the schedules, and I think Bill's pointed out before, we, we look at schedules, course, enrollment, K through 12, every single year at the central office. So all the courses running at the high school, how many are in them? Who's teaching? What, what are sections? What do they teach? We do the same thing at the middle, and we do the same thing at the elementary level, regular classrooms, and the specialists. So we are at the point, we're looking at the specialist schedules, we don't quite have enough for the specialists to serve, so this part, you know, it could end up being a little bit painful, but I think we'll come up with some solutions. And when I say "we," I mean "they." We'll come up with some solutions. This year, because of retirement, we had the opportunity to hire a .8 wellness teacher rather than a full-time, because we knew, we anticipated the schedule would be more like a .8 schedule, and that's worked out well. Music is all set, because one of the teachers already works part-time at the elementary level, is not a full-time person, so wellness, the schedules are fine, music, the schedules are fine, but accompanying that, we have to reduce by .2 in art and .2 in Spanish. So we'll see where that goes. Sometimes there are solutions that present themselves in-house, and the staff members will be working on that, because we have asked them for ideas. So you never know. It's early. I think that's what we keep saying, it's early, let's just see how it all plays out. Okay, but I think, just to put the period at the end of the sentence, as you know, it is our responsibility, when we want something, we need more of something, we're pretty good about asking for it, and conversely, if we don't need even a piece of something, then we have to be just as confident in saying we don't need that, and that's what we're doing here. We have increased demands from social, emotional, mental health issues, which we've talked about at this table more often than anyone would want to, and so we are at the point where we need to add a .5 social worker at the high school. The social worker and the counselors work hand-in-hand together to provide wraparound services for students with difficulties or families with difficulties, or both, and what I know Diana hopes to do with that model is to assign one of the two social workers strictly to the therapeutic classrooms that we have and the alternative classes, where most of the issues are, that, you know, we have kids going in and out, sometimes for hospitalization, sometimes they need more services, and it's our obligation to work with those agencies. So we definitely need another half. We've been trying the last few years to see if, if one would be enough, and it's been two years in a row now that, that we have the data that says it's not quite enough. So that's why we're here, I'm asking you for an additional half of social work at the high school. There's a social worker, by the way, full-time at the Ahern, and Ms. McDowell, who's our editor coordinator, is a social worker by trade, so she also can take on some of those duties at any level if we need her to. We are increasing .1 of the occupational therapist. Always got a question, but always later. And so we had to actually do that during this year. So what happened was, you know, most of the IEPs are redone, reconvened in the spring, and when we opened school, we did not have enough staff time to service all the occupational therapy, OT needs of all the kids we had. So we were paying her a few hours a week for, we don't have overtime, but we were paying her additional to... but we were paying her additional to her salary hourly to take on that, because of the illegality to provide those services. So after a few months of that being pretty consistent, we just actually, earlier this month, moved her up to, to point nine from point eight. Again, we didn't go full-time, but that seems about right to me right now. And then the usual targeted expense adjustments.
From point eight to point nine, you mean, right?
Yes, we went from point eight to point nine. But again, I mean, it sounds, it sounds silly to say, why don't you just go to full-time? But if we're, if we're reducing fractions of other people, it's not, we don't have, in all good consciousness, we can't put one person up to full, if there's not a full schedule there quite yet.
I just mean, you said point nine to point eight, so I was wondering if we're going back, or we're going, we're adding enough.
It is point eight to point nine. Sorry.
I think, just to that point, I think we appreciate the thoughtfulness in that you drill down to that, you know, point one, and, and don't just say, yeah, we'll just put them on full-time. I think we all appreciate that very much.
I think it's, and it's fair to other staff members too, because they were all in the same association, so we, we need to have equitable work assignments as well.
I think, if I may, I think one of the, we always talk about a lot of things on the budget, there's a lot of detail here, but, you know, for our edcom colleagues and the public, I think what's not new, or what's not included in the budget this year are any new programs or wish list items the schools like to have.
No.
This is a, a same set of offerings at the Foxborough schools that we've had. What we're having to do is increase positions due to increased services that are required
Correct.
for specific populations.
Absolutely right.
And I think that's important, because a lot of times, you know, the public doesn't understand, why is the school department asking for an additional two point six four percent of the budget? What are we adding? Well, we're, we're, we're adding part-time positions that we have to add because of the specialty of the population that's coming into our school system, not we want to offer this new program or that new program or this.
That's true. No new programs or initiatives that require staffing at all. Thanks, that's a good clarification. So to be more specific about the changes that happened this year, so we have, obviously, the, the kindergarten phase-out plan, we've already talked about that a few times. We have negotiated bargaining unit increases. And we added a little bit to this slide, because you know we have nine contracts or nine associations, if you will. We have four hundred and forty-five association employees within unions or associations.
Four hundred and how many?
Four hundred and forty-five. And we have five hundred and three total employees on the payroll. That still doesn't include people like coaches and other people who get stipends only, and not necessarily in a regular paycheck. So I don't think people realize that even though we're a small to a, to average school district, it's a big operation. So we have well over five hundred employees, if you add it on the other people who aren't on the regular payroll. But we have four, five hundred and three total employees on the regular payroll. And, you know, close to four hundred and fifty of them are in unions or associations and contracts that we have to abide by. So it is a complex organization. When you look at the next one, what are the staff adjustments that happened this year? So since we ended the school year and started now, just to be very clear. We did add a half of a counselor to the IGO, again, for the caseload. The IGO is very large compared to the other two schools. We had one full-time counselor in each school, and we weren't getting the services we needed for students and families, because the caseload was so far out of whack for the IGO counselor. So we added a half-time counselor for the IGO. We added a point two speech therapist at the Ahern Middle School, because again, when we look, when we analyze caseloads, this, the end of the school year and the summer, and we looked at how much each individual therapist had for students with IEPs and, and scheduling, that school was also quite out of whack. The, the caseload was so far above high school and the elementary therapists that, and again, it's not an aggressive move, but we added somebody one day a week to take over some of those, some of those cases. And we ended up having to add, since this time last year when the budget was first prepared, three point six educational assistance strictly for special education. The Ahern in particular had a lot of move-ins this year and upped their special education caseload. And we had a few kids move in with the one-on-ones required. So we had to, we've been up three point six of assistance in the program. So a total of four point three positions were added, but we also reduced at the same time. So we reduced point two of that elementary wellness teacher I mentioned. We reduced two classrooms at, at the elementary level, the kindergarten at Taylor. The third kindergarten did not come to fruition with the population, so we put them into two. And a third grade at Burl, the, the numbers didn't warrant a third, a third, third grade at Burl, so they're down to two at that section. And we did have a serious decrease in the Title One grant, so we are back to not being able to provide a staff member. So we reduced a half-time Title One reading teacher that used to serve kids at the Ahern School. So that's grant-funded that went away. So while we added four point three, we also reduced two point seven that we felt we could do without. So the net gain that's happened since this time last year is one point six FTEs in the area of educational assistance, actually, that's what they turned out to be. Not, not professional staff. Questions about that? And then, two grants went away, or, or were eliminated, bless you. The two ninety-eight Special Education Early Childhood Grant, two seventy-four Special Education Program Improvement Grant were eliminated this year, one during the school year, and we had a significant reduction in the Title One grant. So we're anticipating a loss of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Just from grants?
Just with grants.
All right, I'm gonna have to correct my, my sheet for you. So looking at the bottom, the FY nineteen request is actually thirty-four, nine ninety-one, one twenty-five. Its key is five twenty-one, and the difference is actually only nine oh one, five twenty-one. Not nine ninety-one.
Nine oh one, five twenty-one.
The percentage is correct, two point six four percent.
And what number under FY nineteen request?
FY nineteen, thirty-four, nine.
Thirty-four, nine?
Thirty-four, thirty-four, nine oh one.
Nine oh one, got it.
And what's always interesting to me on that chart, Bill, is the, the change year to year. Obviously, it's a percentage of change off a ever-increasing baseline. But having said that, I always like to see how much is the school department asking the town to support on a year-to-year basis? So I look at that, and that's the lowest approximate change as of where we are with the budget today than we've had in, looks like, six, seven years. And I just think that's important, you know, we're all taxpayers, we all, you know, we all, we all feel, you know, the pain, and we often talk at this table about balancing our, our wants with what's practical, that keeps the town in harmony and in budget with the municipal side, and, but that provides the right quality offerings for our students. And I, I just like that we're at a two point six four percent and not in a position where we're asking for something dramatically higher.
No, and I, and again, I think at, at just over nine hundred thousand dollars, as you're, you're pointing out, it's the lowest increase we've had in, in a number of years. It, it is because we have some younger staff, you know, we will be going over with the edcom, you know, FY seventeen and eighteen changes for people retiring, being higher than what we anticipated. Actually, it was more in the resignations than it was in the retirement side of things. So, you know, that obviously contributes to a much smaller increase in the payroll side of things. But as you have, you know, as noted, you know, the, you know, nine hundred thousand at two point six four, while it's only, it's about eighty thousand less than I had estimated almost six months ago, you know, again, that was attributable to, to payrolls. And I think when you really look at, again, our budget, there's not a lot of mystery when you have eighty-three percent in salaries. The budget really is broken. I had Allison Mello in today, because she was questioning something on the budget herself, and, you know, trying to understand what was on the line, and I could drill right down to the line and say, okay, it's this. And I could show the people and the, and the things associating to it. And it's like, you know, you see what year they came in here, what step they're on, what their educational degree is. You know, our spreadsheets have all that information, because that's obviously the only way we can price each individual in the process. But, you know, again, there should be no mystery in the salary side at all. It, it is what it is, the only mystery is, you know, if somebody's not going to be here next year. And to this, to Deb's point, the only people we know that's not going to be here next year is sitting at the table right now. But they have literally, like what happened to us last year, we had three retirees last, in the last week of school last year. They obviously didn't want anybody to know that they're going to retire, and, but that doesn't help us a lot when we're doing our planning. And we had, you know, obviously, other retirees as well, so.
I think this puts a premium on a couple of things that I'm always thankful for. The first is very good fiscal management, you know, both from the business manager, but also from the educational leaders. Because I think, I, I don't think I would want to be on a school committee that didn't have tight fiscal management creativity, attention to detail. I think that's critically important to being, being able to keep this in line, so I think you do a great job there. The second thing I think this shows the importance of is our negotiations. And having done that a few times with you all, and Tina has, and Bevy, and, you know, something Chris ought to experience sometime and on this side of the table. But, you know, because eighty, eighty-three percent are salaries, I mean, because of that, if we don't do the right job negotiating on behalf of the town, then these numbers can look pretty different pretty quickly. And that's partnership with the unions and the liaisons to the different groups. But I think those two things are important, you know, the fiscal management and the careful negotiations, because I think both of those help us keep it in line.
I agree.
Agreed.
I think that, you know, this chart also shows that in the years where the percentages were a little bit higher, you know, back before two thousand and eleven, when there was an economic downturn and everybody was hurting, and Foxborough was very tight, very, very tight in those few years. And even, you know, couldn't gain traction with some of the things. And I know it was in, just after FY eleven was over when I returned here. And I think we're still trying to make up for some of the things that you couldn't, you were in the zone where you couldn't ask for them. So I think the years when it's a little bit higher, it shows that our support and the committee's support for the things that we needed, a, a bigger technology staff, for example, technology integration specialists, math specialists that we didn't have at the elementary level. And I think we've certainly proven the, the benefit of the positions that we added here or there. We sprinkled them a little bit, but more, more counselors for mental health issues, for example. So I think that there were some things that district needed, and I think we're at the point where we don't, we feel that we're in really good shape. So I think those were a little bit of, we didn't grow by leaps and bounds, but there were some growth years in the past, you know, six years or so.
Enrollments obviously drive a lot of where we are with expenses. The, we are actually looking at an uptick for next year. As you all know, in the Burl District, the housing development has just, is, is just getting completed, which is a, not a low income, but a affordable housing setup. There's twenty-six or twenty-seven units, two and three-bedroom units that are out there that will start to be occupied anytime now. So we will see an uptick this, this current year for the Burl District on that. On the Taylor District, we have three developments, the Domain that's just been finished. So far, it's, it's holding with the pattern that we predicted it would, which is consistent with the lodge development that's over on the other side, where we get anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-two students a year. They are relatively expensive, so you don't typically get a lot of families moving into them for long periods. Tends to be a swing. Right now, we have about twenty-one children at the Domain that are, are the Taylor District. So they're seeing that. The Taylor District also has two other developments that are in process right now. One is about half-finished, it's the one across from the Dairy Queen, the larger homes that are built in, in that area. And obviously, some are already occupied, but we've got a few that we know have moved in on that one already. And there's another large one that hasn't even really started yet, has been on the books for a while, but I guess there was something with the general contractor, and that's the one that Judge Warren's property out near Route One, another twenty-seven house subdivision that's going to be going in there. And then, I think you probably have just heard, but it's, it's obviously won't affect, I don't think, the FY nineteen in any way. And that's going to be the one that they're talking about in downtown, near the post office. So for next year, the, the three that I'm mentioning are ones that all should contribute to the, the Taylor prop, the Taylor setup itself. And amazingly, the, the middle school, you know, every time we look at their numbers and think, feel that they're going to continue to drop down further and further, they, they get a lot of move-ins. So even though I'm still projecting them to be down from where we are right now this year, that's because they have a fairly large class that's graduating up to the high school, they're last of their, their larger ones. And the actual one going into the high school is bigger than the one leaving, so it's, it's one of those mixes. So again, a slight uptick next year, but a bigger uptick in FY two, twenty, is what I would anticipate.
Bill, the, when you say next to the post office, is that where the old, the Foxborough Reporter used to be, that building?
I think they were in that building at one point in time.
I remember, oh, yeah.
It was an old warehouse of some sort.
And that's coming down, or what's going to replace it?
They're talking about a fifty-unit.
Apartment building?
Apartment building, as well as a commercial building.
Wow. Okay.
So again, that's, I don't, there's no way I see that happening in FY nineteen, just between getting through the process timeways. But, you know, again, something to be, you know, keeping on our radar. I, I think that the, the point I'm trying to make there is we obviously are looking at all the developments that are going on. We're very fortunate, the planning board typically on larger ones send us the documents of the, the larger ones that are going in, so we get a heads-up on them. It's kind of a good relationship that way. But, you know, smaller ones where someone pulls a permit, you know, we don't typically see that, but that's not really what our concern is, so.
The people across from Dairy Queen would go to the Taylor School, not the IGO?
No, the Taylor. We had to carve that off, because to Deb's point, the IGO has gotten so large as far as its area. Remember, the, the IGO has the density with, with the apartment complexes in town are all in the IGO district right now. So it was, you know, to Deb's point, we're already running four sections of everything. The building is pretty much maxed out with classrooms. So last year, you know, we made the conscious decision before they even sold the house in there, because the Taylor District does go beyond that. So we already, you know, we are picking up up there already for the Taylor Division, so that's not a problem. But, you know, we also had to make a conscious decision to do a mini kind of re-zoning, if you will, for the Burl School to take some away from the IGO as well last year. So we're trying to, to, to not split the IGO too big, because it's going to be a problem. And, you know, they are running good-sized classrooms already right now. So the, these, all these developments are really going to be to the two.
And they would have been bused regardless if they had gone to the IGO or the Taylor.
Yes, they would.
Yeah, actually, there's two buses right now that pass each other, one from the IGO.
That Main Street north of town is the dividing line between IGO and Taylor. So we have the luxury, it's probably the only area, we have the luxury of saying, is it going to be Taylor or IGO? So, you know, the realtors are pretty good, so when they called and said, okay, I have this neighborhood going in, will that be Taylor or IGO? All I have to do is look at a map and say, Taylor! Because if we, because we run buses there anyway. So this, that's where the split is, it's almost like two sides of the street. And that's worked out pretty well for us. I mean, it's, it's possible, though, that something else will have to be siphoned off from the IGO to go to Taylor, as we look at that every year, too.
Foxborough. Even Borough would be a.
And maybe another street or two for the Burl.
Yeah.
Bill, just a quick question on enrollments. The last new service that we did add into our budget last year was full-day kindergarten. And for, again, anyone who doesn't have the background, a big part of why we did that was to be competitive with the charter school, where we had their families going there who wanted full-day kindergarten, and we didn't offer that, and, and that's a lost revenue opportunity for our schools. So that's, that's why we implemented full-day kindergarten, big reason.
One of the reasons.
Big reason. Are we seeing impact of that yet? Or how does that play into your?
We're slightly over last year's kindergarten, but we didn't expect the first year to be, because quite honestly, by the time we were able to confirm to parents, you know, we knew there would be people that are already enrolled, gone through the process, because they could get free kindergarten at the.
Or their siblings of older kids.
Right. So we expected it would be a year or so that, before we start to see a realtor, but we're not, you know, we didn't lose any ground at all.
We've had a little trickle-down, though. Before we did this, we had fifteen kids in kindergarten the year before, and I happen to have that in here. I don't have this year, but I think we might have ten. So I think in kindergarten over there now. Do I have it?
I know we've talked about it before.
So I think we, we're start, we saw the beginnings of a trickle-down, and then I think as people don't put their oldest child in there, but maybe just the younger siblings, I think it'll continue to flow in our direction.
Okay.
What has happened with the idea, right now, it's a stall, I think, the, the old historic building across the street from Roberts, because of the historic. Not to tear that down and build that up.
Well, the, the suggestion is basically to, to make that residential, improved residential on the top, probably similar number of units that exist, so we wouldn't lose the residents. So we wouldn't lose the residents, but also to have commercial underneath. There's three buildings there that they would do the same thing to. So I don't, again, we don't, from what I've seen, which is a very limited thing so far, I don't see us seeing an uptick in residential for the IGO at that, at that point, but, um, it would be consistent. Uh, it should stay the same.
There were, there were, there were also going to, there was going to be another building beside and then the building behind and the empty. Now, is there any way that the zoning boards or building permits could ask them to please provide enough parking spaces for the people who are going to be in the apartments? Because where, where, where are all these extra apartments going to find parking spaces in the center of town?
I think, I think by the zoning, they have to, uh, show a certain amount of parking. Um, it is one of the reasons the, the Town Hall was built the way it was, is to service that area with the parking in the front. But, you know, for our perspective, it really doesn't impact us because they don't park down at the IGO. Um, they're not really, you know.
No, I know, but I'm just, I'm just wondering about parking period.
Yeah. Well, it's, it is a problem downtown, but I think they're, you know, it's a, it's a bigger issue than ours.
Probably a problem with everybody's downtown, actually.
Something for another board to figure.
Right, no.
Thankfully.
Thankfully.
We can't help stipulate.
Ah, you're right.
So anyways, I, i- it's interesting, but I do believe next year will be our first year of actually seeing an uptick. And again, but it is, it's, I was kind of surprised to see how much development actually has happened in the last twelve months in town. I didn't really think we had those kind of parcels remaining. There's some other very large parcels out on the Borough District, but they're all owned by the town, under conservation restrictions or whatever, so.
There were new, new places going upright near commu- back in Community Way, that short street.
Yes, there's, uh, that's a luxury condo, uh, complex with, I think, twenty, twenty or thirty, uh, units. Um, they've got the first, uh, building up, but the other buildings are still in process. We'll probably see a little bit from there, um, coming in. And, and again, we need to kind of take a close look to Deb's point. Right now, that's the, um, IGO District. But, um, might, we, there's only one family in that, uh, the, the original street.
Looks like it might go to Borough.
We may want to switch that to the Borough, uh, because again, with the way we did the mini redistricting, it would be a natural, uh, because we already have buses going off on that area. So, you know, we have to, really, we're going to have to play it by, you know, ear and, and, and sight to see what actually ends up happening. I, I know that the first building will actually have residents in it. I think it's eight or, or ten units, uh, in the first building there. Uh, they'll have people in it this year, but, um, and they are, I believe they're all three bedroom, if I'm not mistaken, so.
And while, while none of these developments are really having, are of a sudden landing super huge groups of school age children in the schools together, uh, together, you know, uh, all the dribs and drabs happening around town is giving us some more students as a conglomerate, if you will. But, uh, so, and we do, lest this start a rumor about you're going to need like another school or that, that's not true. We have capacity at Taylor and Borough.
Right.
Um, so we just have to, we'll have to watch the attendance areas pretty closely and maybe do some reconfiguring of that. But we do have capacity, so I don't want to, I don't want anyone to start a new rumor about, here we go with a new school. It's not happening.
There's no need for that.
It won't be.
Bill, you could fire up some rumors and leave the next superintendent to respond.
I could, I mean, you know.
But it is interesting, the one year, it's a hundred housing units. That's.
That's a lot.
Unusual for Foxborough, so, uh, not counting the Domain, which is two hundred and fifty.
You know, we, we need to let you get back on track, but, you know, the bigger concern, I think, as we think about budgeting long term is with these services that are, you know, put on the taxpayer now and less supported by the government. Um, you know, having these new people come into town is fantastic and great for the growth and all, but you can see the impact it can potentially have on the school budget. So, and as you said, you know, it's hard to predict who's coming, so.
So the next slide are things we've already talked about, but it's just a different way of looking at our personnel categories and clarifying that. So from what's existing now in FY eighteen to our new request that you're hearing about tonight, just, it's, it's just another visual way of showing how many categories of personnel that aren't having any change at all. So it's kind of a nice summary. It's like, okay, not much is changing. It's, it's mostly, it's actually all. All the pluses are in the area of mandated services for special education and English language learners.
Do, do, um, Jen, do we have any extra copies of the PowerPoint? Because we didn't get those in our packet. It would be really.
Joe, what's your answer?
No, we can email it. I can email it to you tomorrow though.
Because this is a good summary. I mean, it's all in the, the numbers, but this is, it's laid out very nicely.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, again, we always try to kind of highlight the major, uh, features here. So in the salary side, um, you know, you're looking at, uh, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand as an increase. It includes the fact that we're absorbing the ninety-five thousand, um, that we don't have in tuition revenues anymore. Um, and then on the expense, um, with the offsets that we're losing, um, from the grants and revamping as well, our expenses are going up by thirty-five thousand, so a total of our nine oh one. Um, the, you know, as far as the new expense areas, we don't have, one of the things I did do on the budget, and you'll notice, um, we looked at the history, uh, the AdCom last year asked for us to put, um, the actual, obviously the only actual year we have is the FY seventeen. So the new package has the FY seventeen budget, the FY seventeen actual, FY eighteen budget, FY nineteen, uh, projected. And, um, so you'll see that there's some movement within each school. And that's, uh, we started this a couple of years ago where we were trying to fine tune how the money is spent. And I'll give you a, a good example. Um, the Sangari program that we brought in for the sciences, um, a number of years ago basically has a lot of consumables behind it, workbooks that are, are bought on an annual basis and moved out. A lot of it used to run through our, in, in any one of the, the given elementaries would run through, uh, our, our book, uh, you know, um, acquisition line type of thing. Well, it's really not a, a book. It's really a, a supply, an educational supply because it's, it's going to be replaced every single year as you go through the process. So we, we, we've done a lot of movement within the lines under each of the schools or under each of the departments to basically put the, the money where it's, it's going to be spent or has been traditionally spent by the, the principals. And I think by doing that, we, we, obviously we minimize the amount of transfers we have to do, but also obviously should, it should be more consistent when you look from actuals to budgets as you move forward. These are the few items that we're actually looking at, as increases, um, in the expense lines for this coming year. So I think actually on the, the first one, you want to speak to the?
Yes. Um, you know, when, when we've been here talking about the different things that we want to do, whether it's the, the plan that we had rolled out to you about a month ago about, um, confronting bias and discrimination of all kinds, that we need to be doing a proactive, direct job at that. So we've had some really great meetings with our administrative team and see, um, Sue's here and Allison, nice to have you, Allison. Um, it'll be nice to watch from home and see you sit up here. So one of the things that we've talked about is what are we going to do that's more direct and proactive? So Amy will be bringing you more details of that plan, um, after the new year. But one of the things I think our principals have done a great job is researching programs and resources and speakers and initiatives out there that are developmentally appropriate. So, uh, Sue's been looking into facing history and ourselves, which is, they have some great lessons for the middle school. Both, uh, all elementary, middle and high school looking, we've had purchase of Sam Burns curriculum, which has a lot of lessons about not only, um, growth mindset, but also about relationships and how people treat one another that. So we'll all continue to learn, um, in perpetuity from our Sam, our beloved Sam Burns. And the elementary schools are looking at a couple of other, um, resources on, uh, teaching tolerance or, which is tolerance.org. They have just endless series of lessons at all developmental stages about all kinds of things related to that. So their elementary guidance councils are working as a team to identify lessons that they want to put in at the elementary. At the high school level, one of the things that Diana really wants to do is, um, an anti-bullying and discrimination program called Challenge Day. And it's really quite interesting that it's, it puts a face on that, on that challenge and all the kids would become involved and, and participate in that. So that's the anti-bullying and discrimination program that she's researching. Um, the freshman orientation and transition program is called, uh, Link Crew, which is part of the Boomerang Project. And this is something that we think we do a good job at, but we're thinking that if, Diana's thinking that, um, if, if the high school were to do a, a even better job with freshman orientation and transition, that would start the journey toward all of these things that we want to do. So, uh, Link Crew is about the transition to high school being a major event in the life of the, a young person. And, um, a specific strategy, um, to, uh, since transition to high school is, is considered a period, as they say, marked by emotional stress and discomfort for adolescents, that sometimes it can result in a decrease in academic achievement, however temporary, and increasing difficulty with social adjustment. So a better transition program will set, could have set everyone off to a, a really strong start about decision-making and self-destructive behaviors and risk behaviors and, uh, do a better job with, they call it that rite of passage or transition. So that's actually part of her plan, um, to confront these issues in a more deliberate way. But they do come with some training required and some other requirements. So that's why you see, you know, we're guessing right now that the two together will be about ten thousand dollars. I'd say plus or minus, we're not quite sure. I mean, we'd like to get that started pretty soon to prepare for this incoming freshman class and the transition. Excuse me.
Is Challenge Day similar to Rachel's Challenge?
No, it's a little bit different. Challenge Day is, um, it's a nonprofit organization. I was lucky I printed myself out a little cheat sheet here, isn't it? Um, it helps people learn to connect through powerful, life-changing programs in their schools. It could be in a business, even in a community. And that's their signature program. So they have interactive energetic activities. It's to give teens tools to break down the walls of separation and isolation and re- and replace them with compassion. So any, any good program for confronting, um, dis- bias and discrimination, whether it's race, culture, gender, um, size, whatever it is, is really starts with compassion and empathy for others and, and, and understanding of, of the challenges others face. So that's, it's, it's to inspire people and to help them live in an environment of acceptance, love and respect. So that's, and it, it'll start off as a stronger foundation for all the other conversations that will take place after that.
So it's not, it's not just the day, it's, it builds on that day. Okay.
Great.
So Debbie, did I misspeak or misconclude earlier? Would you say that this is one new item? Or would you say this is replacing something?
It's a new, I, I don't think it's a new, like, initiative, instructional initiative or anything. It's a new tool for, for improving what we currently do at the high school in, in those regards. So, so I don't think it's a new, it's a new activity. It just, so we've brought in other things before, speakers and stuff like that.
To answer programs of authority.
Right. So you've heard us talk about putting that in, but because these two together are a little bit more money than what we'd usually have, say, a speaker, motivational speaker coming in about that, or a, we've had people who used to be addicts come in and talk about addiction, things like that for kids that you wouldn't hear about at this table. But because there, there are specific programs that, that are more than the usual cost to really implement the right way that are also involve sending teachers for training to, as the, the main people are going to coordinate it, that we thought, and because it is such a current issue that we've been having, we thought we would call it out in this budget and highlight it.
Well, ten thousand dollars on a three point four million dollar, or excuse me, thirty-four million dollar budget, isn't a lot of money.
Close to thirty-five.
Uh, yeah, close to thirty-five. And it's also something you've called out as something you feel is very important to us moving forward. I just want to categorize it properly and, uh, okay.
I felt it was important to put it in separately so that we could talk about it. So that the, the public, who is, I think, you know, parents are concerned about what's happening in the world and what's happening around, in kids around them in society. So not only important to call it out for a budget purpose, maybe, maybe that's a secondary purpose to calling it out so that the public knows that we're being very proactive and have been re- really researching programs that work, that have been proven to work and that we feel would up our game in an area that we do already address. But this could, you know, could be game changing in terms of students.
The second one is really, uh, three changes within the athletic, uh, department's expense budget. The first one is, as you know, we, um, contract outside with, uh, Brigham Women's Physicians Group, uh, for our athletic trainer. The, um, the contract that we have, which was a three-year contract, is up this year. So we're going out to negotiations right now. Actually, we went out to bid to, um, um, fulfill that, uh, need. Um, the, you know, my anticipation is it's had a minor increase every single year. But you're talking about a number that's close to forty thousand dollars a year, um, you know, that, uh, that we have to outsource. We still feel outsourcing, it's the best way to go for a number of reasons. It, uh, number one, keeps it under a physician's control and training and, and management of the staff is on their side. Number two, if the individual that you were, if you were to hire somebody internally and they had vacation or were sick or whatever, you have nobody, uh, under the, the current program we have, they will supply somebody else to fill. If we had additional needs, which we have done in the past where we had a number of things going on in the district all on the same day, uh, they could supply us a second one. So I, I think the outsourcing is really the only way to handle this. The ice time, um, for the hockey team, uh, obviously is a price, is a, a thing that goes up, uh, it's gone up every year, unfortunately. Um, but we also, um, are doing, uh, a program where there were some trade-offs on the number of practices we had, but allowing the JVs to actually have, uh, a, you know, ice time to themselves with some practice for them having their own games. Um, if you're going to have this program and a feeder program, you really can't expect everybody's going to be a varsity player day one. So, um, I think Rich has done a phenomenal job trying to, um, manage how many, um, time slots he has to be able to get both things to work, but it's still coming to an increased cost. And then the final thing, and this is something I've been trying to get from the athletic department, so I, I give Rich a lot of credit for this one as well. And we have a couple of areas, uh, you're going to see, um, something later in the music department, uh, when we get to our CIP budget, um, in a next, another meeting. But, um, I've asked both athletics and, and music to really look at our bigger assets. Um, as you know, um, the real asset that the, the athletic, uh, group has is the number of uniforms, the number of teams, the number of, of kids we're trying to supply. And there hasn't been a program of, uh, regular replacement. Uh, so we get caught short a lot of times. We've had to, uh, really, um, bend the ears of, of the, um, um, you know, sponsoring groups, uh, whether it's, you know, boosters, clubs or whatever. Sometimes because we just had no way of doing anything else and, and sometimes they don't really have the resources either. So it's not, uh, it's not something that, uh, is easy for anybody. So what he has asked, if, if we were to increase the, um, uniform or his expense line by between five and six thousand, he could, he believes, and he's kind of shown me how he's done it, he can build a four-year replacement recycle, um, on uniforms. And, and quite honestly, four years on most uniforms, um, it will be interesting to see, um, you know.
Is that stretching it a bit?
Well, I, I think it's realistic because you, the uniforms are very expensive, number one, but, but, uh, you know, it, it does take, uh, a, a lot of, you know, in some sports, you know, basketball is not, uh, somebody who's played basketball, it's not something that, that you rip uniforms very easily. But football and some of these other sports, you know, where you're out there, you know, things happen to uniforms on a regular basis. So, um, you know, I think, I think it, I, I appreciate the fact that he's finally doing this because again, it's been like every year trying to figure out how we're going to get something, uh, resolved. And by not being able to have it in a budget, um, timing is very critical because it takes quite a while to get uniforms, um, ordered and, and brought in, um, you know, through the process. So that's why in his, his total expense line, you're looking at a little over twelve thousand dollars to cover all three of those. Um, you know, I think the trainer and the ice time, obviously, under, um, the requirements, we don't really have a choice on. But the uniforms, um, you know, I think is really something he's trying to be proactive with us on.
How is it done in other districts? Is it done with the uniforms? Is it done through boosters or is it done through the?
It's, it's, it goes both ways, just like it has been here. We've had, uh, we've had, uh, some boosters, um, buy the uniforms for us because they were so bad that they, you know, were kind of upset that we weren't replacing them and they went out and, and did a fundraiser to get the money themselves. I've seen, uh, I know.
Parents have donated fees in other districts.
Yeah, depends, yeah, depends. And you go to another town, they, they're paying the fees and that's how they're coming up with the money, uh, for the uniforms themselves. So every town has a little bit different formula as to how they get there. Again, we're a non-feed town as far as.
A lot of them rely on their, on the athletic fees.
Right, um, to get there.
And they build that, the cost of the uniform into the amount of the fee that you have to pay.
I can just, we have had a replacement cycle for uniforms. It's just that it's, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't really think we've ever had a time where it's like, guess what? Your team is due for new uniform. You're like, oh, nicking the time. Usually we're a year or two behind where they're in tatters. So I think we just need a better plan that.
And is it just the varsity that gets the uniform and everything else is passed down and recycled?
It really depends on sport. But typically it is a, it is a, a turn down. So even though you might be replacing a basketball uniform in four years, the, the, it would go, typically would go down the line.
So the uniforms would be there eight years.
And I don't think you buy a hundred and thirty new football uniforms, for example.
Yeah, I know for football, we'll, we'll pass the uniforms down usually.
So it kind of depends on the sport. A smaller sport, like, say volleyball, they may be all, all at once.
Yeah, those would be because they're all shirts. Typically, it's a T-shirt style.
Some sports uniforms are cheaper than others. Football being not cheap.
Right.
Bill, for, uh, sake of time, the rest of these look pretty standard and things we recognize. Is there anything in particular you want to say?
I, I got a question. Hold on.
Sure.
On the, um, the band uniform cleaning, I believe in here it says it was a grant that was lost?
No, it was, um, a, um, gift fund that was not lost. It was, uh, we had a very large donor at one point in time. Actually bought our band uniforms for us, um, a number of years ago.
Larry Harrington who bought them.
Yeah, and gave us money to also support maintaining the uniforms. That was, uh, that was way before I even got here, so it's been quite a while.
I think it was toward the end of their son's high school. I think it was toward the end of their son's high school career and he's in his 30s.
Very generous.
So, anyway.
So that's expired and basically, again, the uniforms have been, have been maintained extremely well by doing the program the way we've done it. But we exhausted the funds that were, were given to us to do, so.
The only new thing on there is the international assessment that we just reported out on, that we were going to have to pay for our own membership and assessment system. And we got so much out of it already, we just, eight of us just went last week into the Global Learning Network convening in Boston. And that's, that is our next learning curve. I mean, in, in terms of what we're looking at beyond Foxborough to say, what can we do better for kids? It's really what's going on globally in education. And so it has been funded, as our first year was funded by Nonprofits America Achieves and the 1-8 Foundation. And they're not going to do that anymore. They're just, that's just to get you in the gate. So that's, that's a, that's a new expense, so.
That's about it on that.
Okay.
As far as grants, I, you know, we typically give you the two years. So FY18, you can see our grants dropped by 225,000. For FY19, they're going to drop by about another 181,000. And again, this is mostly in the federal grant area. The circuit breaker goes up and down. That's, that's based on the amount of money you spend on special needs out of districts over a certain level. So as an example, you know, if you had, you know, 10 kids that were going to an out-of-district at, you know, $50,000, the limit right now is around 44,000, you'd get 50% of the difference. If you had two kids that are going to a residential placement out of district at $200,000, you get 50% of the difference from the 40, you know, 44 roughly. And obviously, that's how, so it flows up and down. And it really is based on your population out of district and it's, it's given to you the year after you've spent it. So what we're getting this year is what was from FY17, as an example. So that kind of goes up and down. That's not really my bigger concern. My bigger concern is really in the grant side. And the reason for the revolving drop of 100,000 is the kindergarten. Using 100,000 that we would have brought in on tuition money, not having that going forward. So that has continued to drop down each year as we move through this. This, you know, we show this slide every year and, and I, I want you to know, we do change it. The numbers that are actually behind it change every year, but the percentage just stays exactly the same as far as in the different areas. You know, some, if, like I said to both Debbie and Amy today, you might look at that 58% and the number behind it, you know, might be a fraction of a percent different, but it's still going to round up to 58%, so.
Yeah, but I, I take that as stability, though.
It is stability.
No big surprise, no major calamities.
There was a year or two where the yellow was 59 and special ed was 24. But other than that, we don't change, it is stabil, it is stable, but it's just humorous to us.
Yes, I'm sure.
Again, the pie looks the same, is what we always say.
But that's good, that's good management.
Well, what's interesting about that, based on our comments earlier, can you just go back one, Bill? It's interesting that the special ed slice hasn't increased. Right, you're saying that that's been 25?
Yeah, percentage-wise it has. I mean, we've, we've, we've done a, a good job of managing, but we do have a lot more out, out of districts than we had even five years ago. I think we were down to around.
That's quite a number, though. Think about that as a soundbite, right? That a quarter of our budget, an entire quarter of our budget goes to special needs. Which is important, but to me, it's sizable.
What, what, what percent of our population has received special ed?
I think we're at 18, 19 right now, right? Somewhere around. It runs between 18 and 20 at the highest. High teens, depending, usually. I haven't checked this year, but I'll, I'll check that.
I think the one thing we do very well, Kristen, has helped to keep this number kind of in check is the amount of in-house programs that we've developed. We've had, Mansfield has sent one of their children to us at one point in time, paid a tuition in. Plainville's done the same. So if you can develop these programs and if they can service your children as well as, as an out-of-district can be, I think most families like the, the ability to keep their kids within the district, within their peers, and, and go from there. So I think Foxborough has done an excellent job. It's a very hard thing to do because the population keeps changing. So even though you might build a great program on the elementary level, eventually those kids are going to go to the middle school level and then they're going to go to the high school level. And the same population may be coming behind them on the elementary. You can't just move the teachers and, and move the program that way. So it, it takes quite a bit of effort to, to basically manage, you know, the needs on that way and keep as much as we can in-house. And again, you know, the, the, the other side of it is when, when we finally feel that the best thing for the child is to go out of, out of district, those costs are going up incredibly on an annual basis. And again, they don't even tell us when they're going to go up until, I, I won't know next year's tuition's for sure until next fall, when we're already in, in the process. So, and I've never seen them go down, so that's an issue.
As, as Debbie talked earlier, this is my last budget, school committee meeting.
That's the last I have to say about the public school budget, ever.
Oh, I doubt that.
No, it is, so a concrete.
Maybe at this forum.
A concrete evidence that transition's in full effect, we're turning over the next steps to Amy.
I like it, I like it.
So our next steps, obviously, we're going to have a couple more times to be looking at the budget and having conversations. We will continue to monitor any changes as far as available revenues. Our next school committee meeting in January, going back and reviewing, and then the public hearing on the 22nd. And then presenting to AdCom and then voting the final budget in January. The other piece, too, is we had this afternoon some preliminary conversations as far as our school resource officer, where we have one school resource officer that serves both the charter school and then all of our five schools. And really looking at the needs of our students and our population and having the best services in place. So those are some conversations and looking to see, are we meeting the needs? Because we think about preventative measures for students and making sure that those supports are in place. So conversations with the town and with the charter school and all of us there today to, what, are we really meeting our needs there? And what needs, what needs to change?
And I think we have to give a lot of credit to Chief Baker because he was actually the one who instituted us having this meeting. I think he sees the level of needs that are going on, you know, not just in Foxborough but around, and knows that we could be doing a better job. And so quite honestly, that's why I think he wanted to bring us all together to say, you know, are you guys seeing the same thing that we're seeing as far as issues and, and, you know, our shortcomings? You know, I'll just give you a quick example. One of the things, he really sees that we're handling issues as they come up, but we're not really having the time with the SRO to be in the schools, doing the proactive stuff with the younger kids. For them to start to know who the, who the officer is and, you know, have a comfort there. So if something happens down the road, they, they're not, you know, afraid to have that conversation. We're just not getting there. There's just too many issues that happen on a daily basis, as Deb said, whether it's one of the public schools or the charter school that needs somebody's attention.
It was a good preliminary conversation, but we're thinking, he has a wonderful vision for the school resource officer and their role in prevention and, and assistance when necessary that we share. But is it realistic to think that that vision could be accomplished with 2,600 kids on our side and 1,500 at the charter? So there's, this is a start of conversations about, should a second resource officer need to be added around the town? So early stages, even if I'm wrong.
Remind me, the school resource officer is in the police department's budget?
Yes, the current, yes, fully in, in the, that's what I thought, in the police department.
Is that why I clarified?
Is that it, Bill?
Yes, it is.
That's a great presentation, thank you. I, I want to take five or six minutes and just invite, I know Joe's been patient with questions, but also if the AdCom folks were here have any questions, I wouldn't mind letting you ask any questions from under two since you've been kind enough to give us your time to help understand the budget. So Joe, why don't you start?
My name's Joe Garrity and I'm a postgraduate student here in the vocational work-based program at Foxborough High School. And I just wanted to know, I heard that you guys were looking for a part-time social worker. There, I know we already have a full-time one.
Yes.
But if the part-time one came, would the full-time just work with the two team-based learning classrooms? And one just work with anyone in the school or that needs help?
What, what portion of the, sorry, I have a cold, so I sound stuffed up.
Like what portions?
What portion of the one and a half social workers works in the team-based programs? You know, with, with many of the teachers, as many team, and what portion works with the general population? I'm not sure. That's what the high school would have to figure out.
Yeah, like one would work with the team base if that was going to happen, but, yeah, the one we have now, she doesn't just work with team base, right?
No, she works with anybody in Foxborough High School. You know her, right?
Yeah.
Everybody, so it's a, it's a lot to do for one person to work with all of the students at the high school and, and their families and the, the special programs that we have.
So that's why we're looking for another half-time one?
Yes.
Okay.
A little bit too much for one person right now.
It's just like a little too much for one person to do all the speech at one building when you have a large caseload?
Exactly.
Because that's what we were saying, last year we had to do other speeches that were part-time, come in one day a week to help them out.
Yep, exactly, exactly the same.
Okay.
Good question, Joe. Anybody have any questions beyond Joe? Want to ask it this time? Or digest and wait?
So in the package that.
Bill, I'm sorry, hang on. Rob, did you have something you wanted? Nope, you're okay? Okay, sorry, Bill.
You're going to make your list for tomorrow night?
So, yeah. So in the, in the package that you have, though, you'll see that we also, and the AdCom members should have been able to pick one up. There's a five or six-page supplemental document that basically gives you a lot of the analytics on the salaries and breakdowns of the staffing. It shows you really, you know, our total staffing as well, our average salaries, our, I thought one of the things that, that you might, you know, again, you've got a lot of stuff to look at before we have our next meeting, but just kind of pointing these out on the second page. Even though we have 214 professionals under the teacher's contract, you've got about 124 of those that are strictly dedicated to core subjects. But you can see how many support-level things and specials that we have to make up the entire, you know, package. So while a lot of people think we've got, you know, 300 teachers that are in the core subjects, we have a lot of teachers that are either doing things or in the teacher's contract that are either doing things that are supportive to the classroom itself, like our math specialist and our reading specialist and so on, Spanish and arts as far as our specials for, you know, enhancements to the programs and stuff like that. So I thought that would be important for you to have a quick number on. And the third page actually is extremely informative and it, and it shows you a total breakdown of all of our staffing and what our cost is on those levels and how many FTEs each one of those represents. I think, again, as we talk about 83% of our budget being in the salaries, it's, it's really good to be able to get down as far as you can in details on how that's broken down. So as Deb said, you know, we talk about point ones, point twos and stuff. So when you, when you look down this, you see that there are a lot of fractional positions that we need to have in order to make this work. And then the, the last page of page five basically also kind of gives you a scattergram of our staffing as far as where they stand on our pay scales. And the chart below it shows you where they stand from years of service. The only caveat I'll tell you on the years of service, although I don't think there's a lot of people that fall into this category. But if someone came here after five years of service in another district, I don't know those five years. All I know is the years that they've worked for us. So all the years you see there is, is the staff's working within the school district itself. So it could be that, it is possible that somebody has 26 years, has four years outside, so really has 30 years and would be going out. But you can see that, that really we've got, the majority of our staff right now is in the one-to-20-year range. And it's pretty even in those years as far as, you know, 12, you know, 12 in a grouping type of thing.
And we have 80 teachers in the highest step for years, right?
We're at 60% of our, our base is at the top step, yep. You've got 153 teachers. Now, again, even on that, there's a caveat, obviously, somebody who's a bachelor's top step, if they go and get their bachelor's plus 36, they can move into another lane and then continue to have a few more steps that they would go from there and cross the chart. So there are people that can continue to move, but they have to up their game on the educational side to get there. And most of them have to obviously, you know, continue to do that, so. That's all I have.
Full transparency, though.
Well, I was just going to make that comment. I mean, sometimes the public doesn't have the, well, most of the time, most of the public doesn't have the benefit of seeing the spreadsheets and spreadsheets that we have in front of us. But if anyone's interested in seeing it, I mean, there is full transparency here to the line item. Yeah, it's here for, available, so, so thank you. Any final comments or questions for anyone?
I think if anybody does, after you're starting to look through it, you know, again, we always appreciate the fact if you send us an email, let us know what it is that you want more detail on. Again, obviously, we have a lot, but I want to be able to come prepared and give you the, the, you know, full information that you're asking for and break it down and make sure there's no questions at this point.
Thank you very much, Bill. I know we took a little extra time on that, but I always think it's worthwhile.
Well, it makes it completely clear.
Okay, we have the pleasure of, I think, two donations, if I'm not mistaken.
We do. The first is a pearl drum set for the Foxborough Public Schools Music Department by Steve Feinstein. And the, the value of that, they're drums and pretty elite instrument, instrumentation that he has. But the value is estimated at right around $1,700 if you add up all the pieces, which I did. So while it's not a brand-new sale, the, the, the market value of those things adds up to about $1,700. So I would love it if the school committee could accept the donation of a pearl drum set and all its peripheral add-ons for a total of a value of $1,700 from Steve Feinstein.
I'll make a motion that we accept the pearl drums to the Foxborough Public School Music Department from Steve Feinstein with gratitude.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor? 4-0, thank you. Steve?
If I could just add, he wrote a lovely little note to Kami Tadoli. But he said, I, one thing that stood out is that rather than sell them on some internet site to a total stranger for an indeterminate amount of money, I'd much rather donate them to the Foxborough Music Department where they'll be appreciated and played for many years to come.
That's great.
Steve is, still, still plays instruments and comes to all of the musical programs in, in the town.
That's great.
I thought that was wonderful. The second donation is the Foxborough Kickers Club, which is the boosters for soccer. And they are donating $2,000 to add an assistant coach for varsity girls soccer. And this is something that the boosters do do if they feel an extra coach is needed and they're willing to support it. And then they donate the money and then we get the person on the payroll and fully vetted and all of that. So if you would kindly accept the Kickers Club donation of $2,000?
I'll move that we accept the Kickers Club donation of $2,000 for an assistant coach for varsity girls soccer.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
With gratitude, of course.
With gratitude.
Of course.
Steve Uden, who started?
Yes, it was. It was a good way to put things.
See, Steve, we're thinking about you still.
Unforgettable.
Thank you very much to Nancy and the boosters. Okay, other matters that anyone would like to bring up? No other matters?
I did see for the first time the 30 and 60 or 60 and.
Yeah, the drama show.
The drama show, which was very interesting.
Oh, the 30 plays in 16 minutes, isn't it clever?
Very clever and kind of upbeat, my reactions to it were an upbeat improv-type thing.
Yes.
They had a couple of clues, but they, they never knew the order. And of course, each time, the timing's a little different. So we have to go back to the next one to find out the last six that did not make it.
Okay.
And also, you know, theater becomes a reflection of society. And I'm sitting back there, I'm a storyteller, I love stories. So for me, to watch this, it was almost like watching all those, those movies with all these things from outer space whacking and flying by you. You know, and the video games that all the kids, just, I'm thinking, well, okay, theater mirrors society.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm glad it was only an hour.
Very clever, though, I thought. Other, any other, other matters?
Well, Ms. Abrams is here and perhaps she'd like to say something about the Ahern Lego Robotics Club. There was a very nice article in the Foxborough Report. Not to put you on the spot, Sue, but.
But that was exciting.
You were there on Saturday. You were there on Saturday.
It was a very exciting thing.
Stories, too.
Yes.
The Ahern Robotics Team did their first qualifying experience in Bobble, Asherby Valley Regional High School, which was not the right venue because they had two things going on. And it was natural light, which negatively affected the light sensors in our robots. But after the sun went down, we rocked. And we ended up being invited into the States at Robonautica at Worcester Polytech on Saturday.
Oh, very exciting.
And the kids did very well. We do not have to worry about the Nationals in California, Detroit, or Houston. I was a little worried there at first that I would have to figure out overnight travel and airfare and all that kind of stuff, a bunch of time. But they did a wonderful job. And what was really very interesting was that a student had experienced the robotics program, made her career decision based upon being in the robotics team at the Ahern Middle School. And she's a student at Worcester Polytech and went to visit Ms. Tatro during the competition.
Oh, how nice is that?
That's excellent.
And I also have to say kudos to all the parents of all the students. They were awesome driving their kids all over the place. A special thanks to Mrs. Ernst for taking care of the publicity that I never got around to. And she did a fabulous job, so her volunteering is well appreciated. And they just did a great thing. We do need some updated department, but that's for another day.
I thought it was great that, that Erica Snow, our graduate, who's a student at WPI, showed up to, I mean, she, she's just an outstanding young woman anyway, and a, a trendsetter herself. If you remember, she was the only girl on the wrestling team when she was in high school.
Yeah, she, she showed up, well, not this year, but last year, she showed up to one of the practices after she graduated. So, we all thought that was pretty cool.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
And so, there she is taking the time to find her, her Ahern Middle School Foxborough kids while a student in college. I think that's, I think that's pretty amazing.
And Allison's correct. Mrs. Nagel and Mrs. Tatro were there, you know, all day, two Saturdays, and every day after school, packing up the stuff. And really and truly, I loved Mrs. Tatro during her prep investigating ways of bringing robotics to the lower grades. And she mentioned that today, that she hopes to have two groups next year.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
That's exciting.
Their enthusiasm is enormous. They really love it. And it really translates with the kids. Yeah. And this was a mostly seventh grade team. So, we have-
How exciting. So, you have another year to look forward to.
You better start thinking about the Nationals for next year, then.
Right, we could play.
Yeah.
We'll put a charm on.
Just assumed that. I think that, I thought that was great.
Bruce, the other exciting thing that happened within the last couple of weeks since we've been together was the Hail students visited from Australia.
Oh, that was an excellent concert.
I know you hosted a couple, you and Michelle at your home. So, we've had some pretty cool things going on in the district.
It was a great concert.
And so was the regular winter concert.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think the young men from the Hail School were very impressive.
Mm-hmm.
I know all the, I don't wanna say all, but all the host families I've spoken to had a similar experience to ours, which was the time passed too quickly. It was a great exchange of culture, not just when they were on the stage performing together, but when they were just living in the houses with our students. And a great experience all around.
Pretty special relationship.
Yeah, seemed that way.
Yes, and Aaron at the concert wore the Australian band tie that they had given him.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah. He showed it to me.
And tonight was the eighth grade step-up concert. The eighth graders were here playing with the, the band, which was a neat experience.
So, our timing, our timing for the, for the cable access was just right because two people, Neil and Paul Beck, had, were just able to slip in to be here for part of that because the concert was over.
Good.
Oh, I had also just meant to say, whatever holiday you celebrate over the next couple of weeks, I hope it's very joyous. And I hope, wish everybody a gentle 2018 and may it bring you many delights.
Chris, anything?
The second year Foxborough High is hosting the National History Day Competition, March third.
Nice.
So, I will have my students here, her high school.
Oh, really?
Oh, that's great.
Good.
That's it.
It's exciting.
I'll add one other matter, and I perhaps should've done this when Foxborough Cable was here earlier, but maybe Mr. Everson can pass this on to the rest of the team. But update for the committee as it relates to FCA's request that we consider moving these meetings to Town Hall. I know that there's difference of opinion or thoughts or just reaction to that still. Just in terms of where it stands from my conversations, the town manager, who initially said he was in complete support and, and suggested it, has found there are some conflicts on the room on Monday nights. I think it's the Board of Health, perhaps, that's in there. So, the options are to ask the Board of Health if they would be willing to move location or nights, or ask the school committee if they'd be willing to move nights. And I shared with Bill, the town manager, that I wasn't sure moving nights would work real well, cause there's a lot of history there, but that I, we were moving slowly down this discussion path and it was just something I'd share with everyone. And I think he's working on it, thinking about it, and we can do the same. But nothing more definitive than that.
For the time being, we're here.
We're here, we're here. But I think-
Oh, we would, we would finish out the year here, I would think.
But, but you know, in light of, you know, the night we honor Foxborough Cable, I, it seems to me that if we have a way to support them, we oughta, we oughta give it serious consideration.
Sure.
But-
If there's a will, there's a way, right?
Uh, that's right.
We can figure it out.
Uh, if there are no other, other matters, I would like to invite Ms. Deborah Spinelli to the table of honor up there.
Oh, my.
Because it's a special night for Ms. Spinelli. Have you ever sat at the table? Well, I'm sure you have.
Sure.
Many times.
More often as the assistant and before that, and then a couple of other roles I've played here. But, oh, let me not try to do more damage before I get up here.
Debbie, you are our sole mid-year retiree that we honor tonight, because this is our last meeting with you in official capacity.
Tits.
I know you wrote a very nice letter.
I did.
And we wanna recognize you. I suspect we'll recognize you a little bit, a few other times perhaps along the way. But this is our last meeting with you. Your job's not over until December thirty-first, right, Debbie?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have not slowed down.
No.
But I will be next week. I'll be slowing down next week.
Do you wanna begin, or would you like the committee to begin? You want, you want, you should go first.
Yeah, I don't, I, I know I can't get through the whole letter intact, but I'll just give you a couple of highlights. I just wanna thank the community in the town, oh, Allison, she's up there, for giving me just the opportunity to grow my career here. I mean, I've worked other places early in my career before I started here in nineteen eighty-nine. I worked in a few other places prior to having children and just after having children. And as you know, I left and went to be Assistant Superintendent of the community until two thousand and seven, when I came back. But then, you know, the majority of my career's been here, and there's no better place to have had a career. So, I wanna thank people for giving those opportunities to, I think I put in the letter, I can't possibly read it, I think this place has allowed me to just pursue my natural curiosity about kids, about teaching and learning. I still have it. I'm still passionate about that and to flourish and develop those skill sets. My biggest point of pride is the kids and watching you, you guys become like just wonderful citizens of the world. It's, it's really quite a special privilege and quite a very supportive community. It's going to be with, it's gonna be hard to leave the day-to-day, cause I'm still excited about teaching and learning and passionate. And, I mean, our staff and administration here are second to none. I will say that until the day I die. Just, you know, just second to absolute none. And they are, their professionalism is inspiring to me. But beyond that, and then I'm emotional about it, I might not miss the nights. I just wanna say that. I might not miss my nights out. But I think that, I, I've said this often in the last few months, as other people from other communities come up and ask me about retirement. And I think it's unusual for a superintendent to say that I truly am leaving with like joy and peace in my heart. I feel like we've gotten things together. We, we have had at this committee level with the administration and certainly with our staff and our administrators, we've had a seriousness of purpose here in, in, which defies the fact that we laugh hysterically every day. I mean, all of us laugh. We have a good sense of humor and kids make us laugh all the time. A few of them did today at Foxborough High School. I spent the morning here with Mrs. Myers-Pacua. And despite being able to laugh and, and enjoy the children and enjoy each other as, as professionals, we do have a seriousness of purpose here in Foxborough in the last ten, eleven years since I've been back. And I think it's really served the community well to all be in the same spirit of, of seriousness in what we provide you as, as students. But to, to really, to be able to walk away knowing that something I love as much as I do is in the hands of Amy and Allison, who are, you know, just two of the most talented, intelligent, and genuinely wonderful educational leaders I've ever worked in my career. I feel totally at peace. So, I think it's gonna be a great retirement. I'll be down the street. I intend to still enjoy the things with the, about the kids that I have always enjoyed. And, and hopefully, you know, be able to actually, you know, have a life outside of work. It'll be great. So, thank you for all that and for your support. Over the last ten years, it's meant a lot to me. And I feel completely at peace walking away. And I thank you for all the support you've given. Oh, that would be great. I do have a cold. It's not all emotional, I do have a cold.
We've had opportunities to share our thoughts, Debbie, about the job you've done. And we'll have more opportunities. But does anybody wanna say anything tonight? Please feel free.
Yes, I'll start.
Go ahead, Chris.
I haven't known you as long as everyone else there, but in the short time I've known you, I've learned a, a lot. A lot about schools, a lot about managing people, a lot about hard work. And those are lessons that I'll always remember. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure getting to know you. As a fellow educator, too.
Joe, did you wanna say something? You had your hand up.
Committee, whoever, committee can go first if they wanna say something.
Save Joe for last. Best for last.
Best for last.
That's a good idea.
Everyone's afraid to let the tears flow.
Well, my first full-time job in public school teaching started in the fall of nineteen sixty-three in Stonemass. And I have said this before publicly, and I will reiterate it once more. You were the best superintendent with whom, under whom, beside whom I've ever worked. Your imprint will last a long time, Debbie.
Thank you.
And now, I'm looking forward to grandma time.
There you go. That we will share.
Yes, that we're going to share.
I'll go next. It's hard to follow Bevy, but I, my two children have been in Foxborough Public Schools during the entire time that you have been first Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent of Schools. And I, I feel very fortunate that they are, have learned in such an excellent school system run by truly dedicated educational leaders like yourself. So, I feel very lucky. And I wanna thank you for the many, many hours that you put in on behalf of our, our students and our town, because you've worked so hard on the Child Sexual Abuse Committee, and you've really made a difference in that area as well. And I also wanna take the moment, cause I'm sure he's watching at home, to thank Dawn for sharing you-
He is.
-with us, because we are very lucky to have had you as our superintendent for so many years.
Thank you.
I'm stopping before I stop.
We had, Dawn and I had a funny moment today that I had actually at high school, where one of the teachers here said, well, you have any plans? I said, oh, in February, we're gonna go away, not even during school vacation week, Dawn. I go, where are you going? So, I said, we're, the destination. Where are you staying? I said, I have no idea. And he said, you don't have any idea where you're staying? I said, I, my husband arranged it all. I, I have, I don't have any time to contribute to my own life. So, I really have no idea where I'm, I, I know where I'm going, but I have no idea anything about it or where I'm staying, cause he pretty much has to pick up all my slack, which is quite a bit outside of work. So, we're gonna look forward to enjoying it together.
I know you will.
Debbie, I'm gonna just be brief tonight. I may have another opportunity, another time, but maybe three quick things. First, you've been an excellent town servant. This town's very, very fortunate to have you. Second, I'm really thankful that my children have been here while you've been here, because the instructional focus you have brought was just right, at just the right time. It helped us sustain all that's good about Foxborough, but I think it also helped us go good to great, which was something you and I talked about. And finally, it's just been an honor to work side-by-side with you. And I will miss you here.
I'd say the same. It's been an honor to serve with this committee, actually.
Now, we have a tradition, and I'm gonna ask Mrs. Lord's help. We have a gift that we present our retirees. Oh, hang on. Yes, Joe, I'm sorry. You go next.
I wanna share a few words about-
Do you wanna sit next to me?
Sure.
Okay. Are you gonna tell them about our retirement, please? Okay.
Mrs. Spinelli and I have known each other since when she was in her last year as Assistant Superintendent, when she was visiting the Ahern one day, when I was in seventh grade. And I just, back then, I was really interested in the school administration and all that. When I started to wanna be interested in, about the, the school planning committee and that. And then, then since ninth grade, I have attended most school committee meetings. And then, then, then I was, I did a really good job over the summer on keeping her retirement secret before the principals even found out.
That's true. Yes, you did a very good job with that.
You did.
Secrets are a very important joke. Always remember that.
And then, and I'm glad that Mrs. Spinelli has liked my things. Every year, every year that Dr. Reinsel comes to present what we're doing in special ed, what Mrs. Gruber did. One year when Mrs. Gruber did it, she did a slideshow of pictures from the high school. And I remember that Mrs. Spinelli said, this is a good visual tour of our special ed programs. And then, two years ago, I remember we did, some of us in the PAVE program did transition videos. And I remember one thing Mrs. Spinelli worked, learned from me. And then, last year, me and another student came to do, talk about our job experiences with our vocational teacher, Dave Griffin. And then, lastly, Mrs. Spinelli and I are gonna still be friends outside of school when she's gone at the, the first week of January.
What's my nickname?
Chauffeur Spinelli.
So, I'm gonna have even more time for that.
Yeah.
And when people wanna do stuff, I'll say, I can't, I'm too busy. Joey, he's too busy. We can't do that, right? But it's good.
Yeah, cause we'll still go to concerts together and-
We go recycling together, all kinds of stuff. We're gonna have to think up some new things. Deal?
Yes.
Thanks, Joe.
Nice job, Joe.
It's all good.
Good job, Joe.
Beautiful.
So, I'm sorry I forgot. How could I forget? Great job, Joe. So, now, in conclusion, as we do with all retirees, Mrs. Lord has a gift for you-
Oh.
-that may look familiar. And I have to thank Janet, who did a superb, I said about a week ago, Janet, we need to have the gift ready. And she said, I can make it happen.
I didn't even think about it.
This is out of our cycle, so that's magic.
She's kept a secret, too.
She, she, she did a tremendous job, cause I did not give her a lot of lead time. And as of a few hours ago, she was still working on it.
Yeah, it happened, yeah. It happened. It happened. It may not happen. But when we, you just threw us out of our cycle really.
I know. Thank you so much.
I have founded a wonderful privilege to be able to present the retirees, because so many I've worked with so long. But, you know, pretty soon, everybody's gonna be retired. So, one of you are gonna have to take over, because I won't know anybody anymore.
So, Debbie, you know, as you know, there's one more tradition. You have to make the parade.
You have to do the walk.
You have to do the walk.
Not really shaking, but. I'll sit over here. Oh, I'll see you tomorrow.
Congratulations.
See you tomorrow. Thank you for everything. I'll see you tomorrow. And forever after. Yes.
I'm gonna give you a kiss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. It's been a great ride. Enjoyed every minute. Thanks, Bevy. Oh, thank you.
Bring it on.
Oh, thank you, everybody.
All right.
Really wonderful. And I'll be working hard for another, almost two weeks.
Ninety.
And then, I'll still be around town, so I hope to still enjoy everything that's wonderful about our community. But thank you very much. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Anyone have a motion they'd like to make?
Can I make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
With gratitude.
Good night, everybody. Good night, everybody.